We'll get going. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as all. First thing on the agenda tonight is... You guys want us to put reorganization up to the end?
Yeah.
Everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
The, um, site plan review hearing for, um, the applicants, Mike J. and Lisa A. Malile. Did I say that right? Oh. Um, I want to state a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Um, are the applicants, will their representatives here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to?
For the record, my name is Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering. Mike and Lisa are right here.
Okay.
We submitted a, uh, application for site plan review to the project, um, which essentially is a, uh, an ice cream, um, stand. It's gonna be, uh, it's not an actual building construction, it's gonna have a, uh, trailer basically with a, with a building on top of it. Um, or just a basic trailer, the final design of that is still being worked out. Uh, but on the corner of, uh, Plant Road and Gardner Road, uh, the project is to create a parking area, uh, gravel parking lot. Um, the, the entrance would be on Gardner Road with the exit being on Plant Road to basically bring people back into the intersection to go back out onto Gardner Road. Um, we have eight parking spaces shown, uh, where it is gravel, there's just, there're gonna be spaces available, they're not really fully marked. Um, you know, anything like that, but we made it with sufficient room for gate spaces. The area underneath the, um, trailer would also be crushed down, so basically everything is gonna be allowed to infiltrate into the ground, uh, during the smallest storm events. What we did also, as part of our work with conservation, we have to, uh, show how, um, the pre and post rates of runoff work. So we did that and we added that to the application as well. So the runoff from the area that we're developing, um, because it does change the characteristics of the land, it gets held into a settling basin, which then, uh, during, during larger storm events or multiple storm events, it ends up overflowing. Uh, I just wanna check to see what those elevations would be at. So even during the hundred year storm, um, the spillway elevation's set at nine nineteen, I'm sorry, yeah, nine nineteen. And so if there's a hundred year storm, that's what it would rise up to, would be at that, the spillway elevation to burn, then it would be a foot higher than that. Um, so all the water should be contained within that, uh, during those storm events. Uh, there are some challenges with this site, mainly because of riverfront area, um, very limited on what you could do on the project. So, uh, we, we did, uh, basically the, the amount of work that the, uh, DEP regs would allow us to do on the project, basically, uh, which is the percentage of, of disturbed area within the riverfront area can, it has to be less than ten percent. So that's on the conservation side, we'll be meeting with them next Monday. Uh, but the, the basic area, uh, beyond that is grass now, it'll be grass when we're done, have some picnic tables up there. Uh, basically what it's intended to be is a, a nice place to stop, get an ice cream with the family and, and enjoy. So that's the essence of the project, really, relatively critical. The use, however, is a lot of that, right?
Is it, is it a temporary structure?
It's a trailer.
It's a trailer, yes.
It's eight and a half by twenty.
Yeah.
Alright, Mick, just say your name for the record.
Mike Malile.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's not a, um, there's no foundation, it's, it's basically a, a, literally a trailer with wheels and they can remove it during the winter months and put it back in the spring.
Yeah, I was getting it, 'cause it, um, but it is, is that your intention to remove it in the off season?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause we, I have seen that flooded down here before and it'd be a shame to see it going down the river. So that may be one of the concerns we should take into consideration to avoid a casualty. Yeah, yeah.
The, the backside, uh, of the property does, does, is in the flood, uh, prone area, so that, that is, is outside of the area that we're working in.
Yep.
So we should be good in this, in this corner.
What's there now, Bill? Is it just an empty lot?
Yeah.
This is, this is just beyond the storage area, is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes, yep.
The cow wash.
This is the road that heads down.
It's on the other side of the Plant Road from the cow wash.
This heads down to the, uh, Tretin Plant.
Yep.
In the town line.
You get the cow wash and there's that Plant Road, then you have that little lot, then you have the river.
Yeah, that's right.
That's on that little lot in the corner.
Is there enough land there? One point, one point nine acres?
Yeah, there's enough land, yeah.
Now, what about the, um, public facilities?
Water's too far away, sewer's too far away, so that's why we ended up going with the trailer configuration. Uh, we were, originally we were looking at, um, tying into water and sewer, potentially doing a separate system if that didn't work. But, um, with the riverfront requirements and the ability, inability to disturb too much property, uh, we, we basically backed into the trailer. Apparently, from the discussion that we had with the applicants, their original idea was to do the trailer, uh, and then they were heading towards a building. And then when we got into the details of the project, realizing that sewer was so far away and water is so far away, uh, it made more sense to go back to the trailer configuration, that's what we did.
So what are you actually doing for water and sanitary?
There would be, I think we talked about-
Sand cans and the water is in the trailer.
Yeah. And then, and then a, uh, do we have a porta potty on site if that was needed?
A porta potty for, okay, for that, and then your water for washing, I mean, that's kind of like a blown hell thing, but where is that?
It's all generated within the tank, yeah, within the, uh, trailer itself. But some continue, yeah, similar like an RV would have.
It's a ported gallon tank, I just bring in another tank and replace it.
On the, on the wa, on the waste or on, on, for fresh water, you mean?
For fresh water.
Okay. So where do you dump your refuge from the, the trailer itself or washing and whatnot? Where does that go?
I take it out of there.
So you're gonna have to have like a gray water tank?
Yeah.
That you're gonna have to remove in and out every day as well as water or whatever?
It's not like we're cooking in there, so it's not like it's gonna, it's just ice cream, so it's not gonna have a lot, but...
Separate, separate scoop for each.
Water your lawn with the gray water according to the interview.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted, we need to make sure that, you know.
Yeah.
Don't ask the questions, we don't get the answers, right? Um, anybody, uh, James Rowe from Whitman and Bingham for peer review, he's present tonight. I know they just received the plans, so does anybody have any, um, other questions for the applicant before we really just have to turn it off to peer review? Um, unless anybody has anything pending that you wanna bring up to, uh, Whitman and Bingham for, for the applicants?
Exactly what would you be serving?
Hard ice cream.
Just hard ice cream?
And Jimmy's.
Yeah, no soft serve, but it's, uh, it's fourteen percent butter fat, it's from the Creamery in New Hampshire.
He mentioned someplace food items, I-
I know that, that said that, I don't know why that's important.
So are you strictly ice cream, is that what it is? Ice cream, yogurts or whatever, but I mean, that's, that's your, what you're looking for?
There are, the, the ice cream, if it's in a cone, that's considered a food product, so we, we threw that in there, so it's not-
Technically.
Correct.
Otherwise you won't get a cone, Dennis.
You get a cup.
Alright, but that means paper disposal, so.
Uh, through chair, I'd actually like to ask for a waiver to the peer review, I mean, it's a, it's a relatively simple project, uh, there's really not a lot to it. Uh, we're gonna be going through the drainage with the conservation commission anyways, um-
I did speak with conservation chairman today, I happened to run into him, literally walking his dog, and, 'cause I knew you guys had just met with him the other night. And I did say that they were, they had no, no issues, so to speak, uh, 'cause you guys did meet him the other night, right? Was it Monday night?
It was a site, a site review meeting that Mike went to.
With Mel Land Street?
Yeah, last week, whatever, and they said that they were satisfied with the plans, however, they didn't have the ability to do the calculations and that's usually where, where our, um, site plan review comes into play. And if you don't mind, I'll chime in with Mr. Rowe. Jamie, have you had a chance to even look at the plan yet or anything, or?
I have, I, I filled the email, either things today.
Okay.
Took a very simple project.
Okay.
Um, I actually have, um, you know, three suggestions to the board.
Alright.
And it's entirely up to the board, but, uh, Billy Hannigan asked, you could, you could actually waive the peer review if you want to, that's one, number one. Number two, if you do believe it's a simple project and, and you, Billy has answered all your questions, um, you could literally approve the plan subject to Whitman and Bingham's peer review comments.
Okay.
Have the plans, uh, revised accordingly, and then a final plan submitted for your files, uh, at a later date, from June eleventh to the twenty fifth. Or we could continue to the, to June eleventh, then I'll have the peer review done for, for that meeting, entirely up to the board. But it, I, in looking at the project, very simple project.
What's the, what's the flavor of the board?
I wouldn't wanna get ice cream next week, so.
Tonight?
Still, while it's still hot, but still, I mean, I, based upon Jamie's comments, if they, if we could do a provisional, I do have other questions, but if we could do a provisional approval based upon-
Yeah. From where I'm sitting, I think we all pretty much like ice cream, I can tell that.
I don't see why we couldn't waive a peer, except for Ali. Just keep it simple, just 'cause it's seasonal and-
Well, yeah, no, I- Okay, Dennis, what, how do you wanna chime in? That was John's time.
You said that the parking could accommodate what?
Eight cars.
Eight cars? That might be-
Get yours to go.
Hmm?
Get yours to go.
Yeah, but eight, eight cars, you might have a lot more than that if you have reasonably priced ice cream today. It's five dollars a cone in some places, so.
That'd be a reasonable price.
We'll send you somewhere else to get one.
Do you have a capacity to expand that parking? Are you able to expand that, uh, for additional?
Unfortunately, because of the conservation, um, restrictions on the property, we would not be able to expand, uh, beyond the limit of work that we're doing.
Okay.
Um, we would not, at the same time, we wouldn't really want people parking along the road, um, but I think that they could park down Plant Road.
I think Plant Road, I think Plant Road would be, we won't.
Just not need no parking sign.
We can't permit Plant Road, but we can't tell you not to, it's, it's, it's a town road.
What about lighting? Is it gonna, so are, are you gonna be plugged in the power or having your own power?
Well, the pole that is on the lot is the town's electric pole, and my electrician's just gonna put a, a post with a service on it, and we already talked to the electric, they said they can hook it up with a-
You'll have like a street light there or something to light it off the pole? I'm just kinda curious, like directional lighting, to light up your-
To light up the lot?
Yeah.
The trailer will be sitting within like ten feet of that pole. If, if the town will put a-
Yeah, they'll try.
-a street light on that pole.
Yeah, they, yeah, you can have a private light.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, only because, like, in July, it probably doesn't matter, it's light out till nine, nine thirty, but come September, it starts to get, you know, dark out, and people still want ice cream.
Steve's a lot of experience.
I like ice cream.
Alright, um-
I'd be okay with doing the, the provisional, my own approval.
So Dennis, are you, are you okay with the provisional, um, that, that Mr. Rowe spoke up?
Door?
Are you, are you okay with, like John had said, take, um, door number two, as I say, with, with Jamie said, do a provisional approval so they can expedite moving through and out?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with that, yeah, yeah.
And did Kristoff have a comment? I didn't. Kristoff, was your comment like, why have any?
Yeah, I, I was gonna be in favor of, of door number one, just to be favorable. Just to be favorable to a seasonal business, I assume we wanna get going this, this, this June, but if, if door number two does the same thing, then-
I think we're only talking left to two weeks, so.
Only because the cal, the, the calculations, unless anybody in the board knows how to do the calculations, we probably should have someone sign off on it.
Tim?
Yeah, I think we should go with the provisional.
Okay. Alright, um-
That allows us to close the public hearing and-
Yes. Alright, does anybody else have any questions for the applicants or any so-called direction for Whitman and Bingham on the peer review? Okay. Seeing none, um, I want to entertain a motion to do the, um, um-
Uh, Mr. Chair, can we just, just as a formality, just ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants any other comments?
Oh, okay.
Just in cases, I don't know if there is or not.
Anybody in the audience, anybody, everybody in the audience like ice cream? Get that cleared right up. But I'll kind of say, everybody else all set?
Um, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to-
Provisional.
Uh, approve the site plan that's submitted, as submitted, um, based upon any changes from peer review.
We all know the intent of that, right?
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion on the motion? There. Seeing none, all in favor? Alright, opposed? Abstentions? Kristoff has a, he's a, but we're within three hundred feet, so abstentions. Um, alright, so that closed the public hearing at the same time, correct, John?
I will now make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, um, second?
Second that.
Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All in favor? We're good. Alright, thank you, guys.
Good luck, everybody.
Thank you, Jamie.
Good luck, yeah.
Get ready to serve Dennis's three minute ice cream. Take up a parking spot.
So I'll get the peer review done, submit it to the board, uh, give a copy to Billy Hannigan, and then he can submit the revised PNTW and give their revisions.
Perfect. Thanks for coming in, Jamie.
See everybody, thank you.
Alright. Alright, I don't know why, uh, Mally, why is there a check for one hundred dollars in there from the applicant?
No idea. Ask Carol tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't know why there was a separate check from outside of, um, do you wanna put it back in the envelope?
Yeah, I'll put it back, 'cause I'll take the whole pack back.
Just do the math, I don't know why.
Yeah, it's not Bill, right?
Is that you guys, is that them?
Bill Hannigan's all set?
You guys are all set.
Yeah, we're good, Bill, just go through, uh, Whitman and Bingham and we'll go through there. Thank you, sir. Alright, agenda. Okay, we have an A and R for Ross Shribner, am I saying that right?
Yeah, it, it's one that's already been approved, I'm Trevor Fletcher with, uh, Graz Engineering, the engineering company. You guys already signed a Mylar for it, but there's only three signatures on it, and, uh, the registry won't accept.
You guys did that in February or something like that?
It was in March two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
It's already Harold.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and Ross, he, he never went to record it, it's just now, before the project being sold, so now we just kinda-
Oh, I did hear about that, okay.
Much new copies for it, same exact plan, just need five, five, so there are four signatures, I think, is in the home.
Okay, is this the same one that somebody's attempted to add a lot or cut another lot off or something like that at the same time?
Uh, it's gonna be in the future, yeah.
Okay, but it's not, doesn't reflect on this plan?
No, no, this is just, uh, 'cause they're trying to sell the house, and so that's why they're trying to record it, so they can reference the plan and the deed.
Yeah, and they can't because they don't care, record it, okay.
I think those are the ones that are rolled right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, it was over a year ago.
There was three of you here, and then I think we called in, or we called in over the phone, yeah, and we only got three signatures.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah.
If it wasn't- February twenty first of eighteen, okay, I wasn't-
You were gone.
Uh, not gone.
I think Frank was gone too.
Yeah, I figured I'd print out the five, five copies.
Alright, does anybody, uh, wanna review this for, um, do you know who's, who signed the, the original one, Strube? Travis, Travis?
I don't know, I'm Trevor.
Travis, alright.
I think I was one of them, I think it was myself, Dennis, might be you, Charlie. Do you remember we called, had, we wanted to have a quorum, and we called Tim.
Electronically stuck to the vapor one.
I guess it doesn't really matter who signs, 'cause the other one is just kind of void, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Baptist card.
Yeah.
Do they expire?
I don't know if they expire, but it's null and void. Yeah, it's not affordable.
There's only three numbers signed, you can't do it with three, it's a seven member board, so you need at least-
The date wouldn't match either.
Sign it now, never-
They've now assigned A and R and just-
Do we have to revote?
Let me see the-
Yeah, we probably should revote.
It's February, the date is February twenty first of eighteen, so you literally did the exact duplicate of, of the plan, is what you did?
Written a brand new, yeah.
So we should probably put it to, put it to a vote, Kirk, let people-
Do we have all the same members present?
But if we-
Well, all of us are here, so I think the board hasn't changed.
The board hasn't changed since, since last-
Right, but if we just vote it now, just to keep it clean?
Yeah, that, that would be the best thing to do, I think.
I mean, not that we don't believe you, but I don't, I don't trust you, I don't trust anybody, but is this, is this like all set through the paperwork that we had, uh, filed?
Yeah, all legal said was that when we do a telephone conference, we have to have an actual quorum present in the room.
Right.
Um, before-
No, I know what happened, but the same, but it's, so everybody has a member, I, I wasn't-
Carol had everything reset, she had Ross re-sign his paperwork, and I think she put it in the folder, I honestly don't know.
Okay, so it's all done and paid for and all the descriptions and the filings of it and done?
Yeah.
It was just a recording error?
It was just a recording error.
Okay, so I would just say, oh, we're just gonna vote this thing out to sign it, or just do it?
I would just make sure it's-
Alright, just-
And I would just maybe add a, again, not that we just trust people, would just add a comment that was, well, we vote to approve it based upon the information presented.
The original plan submitted with no changes, just to be-
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's dated February twenty first, twenty eighteen, he just really just did the plan over and left the signatures for five people.
So did you, is that your motion?
Why can't we just look at it now and sign it?
You can look at it if you wanna look at it.
Yeah, if you wanna look at it, go ahead, Frank. If you send the whole stack down there, 'cause it's got the Mylar on it, it can stack, Dennis, watch out, let's get the Mylar on top.
Make it muddy.
Yeah. Watch out, don't bend it, Dennis, the Mylar's on the top.
Okay.
Don't bend it with your finger.
I wasn't here, I'm not gonna-
'Cause Mr. Fletcher won't be happy.
Uh, the registry won't be happy.
Were you here?
I was here, I'll, let me just look real quick.
Yeah, registry's really picky.
Right, this is the part that you, this is the house, this is what was separated right here, right?
Yeah, yeah, now they're just selling the house off and they just wanna-
Yeah, they wanna do a clean title.
I wasn't there, so I won't take any action on it, so.
Could build another house in the other lot.
Someday.
Yeah, I think, uh, they're actually gonna try to-
We're taking your word for it, all paperwork's in order though.
Two or three lots, I forget now. They started doing the testing and then the last lot they were testing, the, the back hole broke down, so I think they've still gotta do testing on one more lot.
What was that?
That's on Baptist Common.
Baptist Common?
Yeah.
Oh, we have to sign out.
Wait a minute, Dennis.
We're gonna vote?
Are you just, first one to sign it?
I signed it.
Well, what's the date of your signature?
I didn't put a date, I figured I'd let you guys-
Yeah, you're on the second line.
That's why I did it.
Yeah, okay.
But even though the date on here is this date, we-
You can sign it today's date.
We should sign it with today's date, right?
That's what I was trying to think of.
I signed the second line, 'cause I figured Dennis would date it, sign the top line.
So, okay.
But do we wanna just do a, I mean, we can do it while you do it.
Yeah, let's do a quick vote on, you matched all the other paperwork that went through.
No, 'cause that's gonna be gone.
No, it already does, it's the same exact plan, date and everything.
But like, signature order is not gonna matter, 'cause that was a, a null and void.
So it, it's appropriate that it's a new date.
The other plan, whether somebody spun copies off the Mylar or not, it doesn't matter, 'cause it would only show three original signatures, which would make it-
It won't be recorded.
A, a dead plan anyways.
I wanted all the signatures to be on the same day, I could've brought in the old Mylar, just had you guys add a couple signatures, but then I thought they might have a problem with two different dates being there.
I think this is probably-
Frank?
Wouldn't it be just easier, rather than make it complicated, just take a quick look at it, we've got enough people here.
Plan right in front of you, look at it.
Yeah, I know, but say I take a quick look at it, it's not very complicated, and just, what you got, just throw away, and we-
That's what we just did.
That's what we just did.
Yeah, I thought that's what we just did.
I didn't know we did that.
Yeah, well, I mean, we looked at it, it's exactly the same plan we saw before.
Dennis, just date today's date.
May, yeah, May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth.
You don't hear it, it's- That's an inside joke, 'cause he dated a plan one time a year ahead of time.
Whoops.
And we have no idea what hap, why.
And you can't read them all. It's not twenty twenty.
I will second John's motion.
Okay.
Why then you won't read it?
John makes a motion to accept and sign as submitted.
Yep.
Charlie seconds.
Given the point it being what we signed, what was presented previously to the board.
All in favor? All in favor? Alright.
Breakup stains.
The house restroom over.
Crazy busy, not busy.
That place is always busy.
Yeah, crazy.
Kristoff, we'll turn to the side, Ryan.
Way back, way backwards. You're not signing? We just don't have enough restrooms in this area.
I want them to cook good food.
Oh, yeah.
You can, you can get five, yeah, you only need five signatures, you only need four, but it's good, Tim, sign away.
Like Williams and things like that.
How many paper copies you want signed? Do you need any signed?
I get five. I, I just need one, so I don't know how many you guys are trying to sign.
It don't matter, this goes on file, as we don't need to sign them, um, 'cause you can spin many copies off of that. Yeah, yeah.
We only need to sign two?
I mean, you can sign all four, we don't need them, 'cause we just- For some reason, the, the way that our bylaws, they send it off to other departments and nobody, all the departments have a big stack of plans, they don't know what to do with any of those. If you need a plan, you just go online and you print it off, what's on file, so it's kinda like old school regs that don't-
Should be actually caught up in today.
Yeah.
It should be less paper and not more paper, because you can just go online and get anything, you just want to get a booking page, a page, no, plan book.
We went to Carolina with my grandson.
Yeah, yeah, five hundred pages. No.
Four, four, eight of the beers.
I'll go down into the stockroom.
Yeah.
Sixty-two.
That's done, if you want all that.
Sixty-two.
You want a copy to stick that on?
Should we leave this here for Ross to pick up, or should I take it?
No, no, you take it, yeah, we don't want to be responsible for that.
We've already screwed it up twice, come on.
You want one to, we only have four, we need these four.
Now I'll do a-
How many do you drop, four? Is it four, four copies or five?
Four, five.
'Cause I read state four copies, are you gonna be all right like that, or you? Okay. It is raining out there, so you don't-
Yeah, but rain actually doesn't really affect it, it's like a classic.
Okay, so he's going to you, Mally?
You need one, you said?
We need all four, Kirk, we need all four.
Yeah, we need all four.
Oh, you do need all four?
Yeah, we, yeah, we-
You guys all set with me, or?
Um, yeah, we're good, that was from Ally, right, you good?
Yep, alright, thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda, we have an A and R for Ross-
He just did that.
Right, Shribner?
Shribner, we did that.
Forty Baptist Common Road. Both of two lots will be divided. Alright, but now, is there a check for these?
That's the one you just did.
That was the one that was already done from last year.
Oh, that was, that was Shribner, okay, alright. You're almost Smith's, like, everybody's gonna funny anything in. What else?
You should talk.
Whoa, Marjorie, rolls off the tongue. Alright, um, discussion, Ball's Elementary School Marijuana Cultivation Facility, pamphlets are in packet. Uh, that's, they're actually holding a public forum, Charlie, is that right there, Brian, everybody has it near packets, I think I'll do that.
Yes, that's this one right here.
Everybody has it near packets, they're gonna be holding a, um, let's see. That's March fourteenth, they're gonna be holding a hearing on this.
On a hearing?
Mr.?
Community outreach.
Yeah, it's gonna be outreach, when is the date of that?
June forty sixth.
I think it's June fourth.
Why does it not say it on the front? Anyways, good read for you, everybody, so if you have concerns.
Who has concerns?
No, he said if we have.
Oh. Concern me having cashed their check yet.
Is it on the signature, it says June third, are you looking, looking it up right now?
I'm looking right now.
Okay, so you can make a note?
It is Tuesday the fourth at six thirty, here.
June fourth?
Yep.
Six thirty?
Yep.
Alright.
And they'll be talking about the elementary school and valley florist.
Um, oh, one's at the former elementary school in Ball'sville, and the other one's gonna be a valley florist.
This is a public hearing?
Uh, it's public informational, right?
Yeah, it's a.
It's just kinda feedback from the community?
Cannabis establishment, community outreach meeting.
Yeah. Smoke them if you got them, one of those meetings.
Are they trying to get us to do a zoning amendment, is it this?
No, I think it's just informational thing, if people wanna put their two cents in, one not, a couple businesses wanna come into town.
If you look at this process that Tim Harrington, Thomas J. Harrington, gave to Carl Terranzini, um.
Where you at, last page?
It's, it's on section two zoning amendment.
Yeah, right now.
Oh, that, for, um, for the Ball'sville Elementary School property, that's in a village district, is considered manufacturing.
Right.
Right. Right, but is, does the, does the planning board have a say on that, or is that just through Dicky Hanks, cause it's zoning, or the zoning board, would that be approved by the zoning board?
Well, the zoning commissioner would come up with his two cents as far as how he's seeing it, read it in the regs, and then if it, um, requires planning board, but if it's a zoning thing, we can't, we can't waive a, um, a zoning requirement, so they may have to do maybe an overlay district or something like that, I don't know yet what they wanna do, I mean, I know what they wanna do, but I don't know what the, um.
I guess what I'm getting at, is I, I'm not seeing us changing our, uh, you know, the.
Description of zone, it wouldn't.
All of the zoning that we already have, changing it to accommodate one business any more than we would any other business.
No, no. No, 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 I think.
I don't wanna get into that.
Well, I think that's a good point, although, the use of the building was a school before, right, so I mean, if there's additional use for that building, or in that area zoning, we may wanna consider, it might just be only that building, I don't know. But if the town's gonna get rid of the fire station down there at some point, and the school, and the other buildings that might be down there, then we, I think we could consider changing the zoning.
If anything, it would be a, an overlay, my opinion, be an overlay district, it wouldn't be a general zoning change for all the village districts.
Right.
Is it in the district, village district?
The elementary school is village district?
It is in the village district, okay.
I think if anything, it would be an overlay district within the district, so that doesn't set all the other villages up for, so common use.
So essentially, it's an exception because there's, who's not.
Not gonna be a school anymore.
So we need to do something to keep that viable.
Right, but that's really, basically, that's just all about going, listening, and area concerns, so they can figure out which avenue everybody wants to go, or what's the best way to get there, so. See you June, June fourth, which actually, what's that, next week?
So that's all that's on, that's all.
Couple weeks, right?
Weekend's the next one.
We're not looking at anything on that, we're just talking about that thing.
We need, yeah, it's, that's just an invitation to get to the hearing, there's nothing, they're not asking for our input as a board or thing right now, they're just saying, in general, it's a general invitation to all, uh, board, uh, all boards. Okay, signature, signature card for what's registry of deeds?
Oh, wait, no, skipped gravel pit. Got Bonds in and gravel here.
Oh, okay, okay, gravel pit discussion, stormwater plans, doesn't say anything about who.
I don't know, I shouldn't, yeah, it's for the old Hicks gravel pit.
Okay. Who?
We just wanted to come in front of you informally, introduce ourselves, my name is Karen Huback-Kiley, and I'm the chief operating officer with Bond Construction Corporation, with me, I have Jim Talby and Eric Fleming, who are with Casella Organics. Um, obviously, it's been an ongoing gravel pit on and off since the late eighties, um, so we're looking in, at going in for, with a joint venture to come in front of you with, you know, proper planning paperwork and everything. Bond would do earth removal, Casella Organics would handle reclamation to be done, um, so really, we just wanted to come in front of you, I wanted to give you some of my business cards, um, each of us do have agreements with the landowner to give to you, so that we figured it would be great to start an open discussion now, to see if there's any concerns that you have, based on maybe some past practices, or anything else, it's always better to, you know, come in front of you informally and to have a discussion.
Yeah, that's fine, the, um.
But where is this gravel pit we're talking?
This is off of Gavin Road.
Royal, off of Royalston Road, Gavin's Road's on the right.
So this is a copy of mine.
This was the former.
The red homes? Yeah.
You mean to place in the corner of two O two in Royalston?
No, no.
You would go sixty eight, and then, um, take a right on Gavin Road, Gavin Road's about a mile.
Oh, you're the same bond from Spencer, okay, okay, alright, um. The, when you say remove soils from up there, I thought that, that pit was pretty much exhausted of any viable materials up there.
There's another, uh, twenty five acres up there, that's part of the original plan, that I have to show you. All, obviously, all of this would need to be, uh, redone, but I have a copy of a plan that was done in twenty ten. So as you come in, the driveway here, a lot of this was done, and there's a lot of paperwork that was previously done for stormwater and stuff in this area, this area here, D, has not, um, been excavated yet.
Okay.
So it would really be this area, and there's a lot of reclamation work that needs to be done here, and this is where, um, Casella Organics would be able to come in, start reclamation work here that wasn't done properly, and actually, most of it probably wasn't. Um, and then, as we go this way, they would be right there with us to do reclamation as we go.
When you're talking about reclamation, can you elaborate a little more?
Please, this is.
So Jim, obviously with.
So, um, we've been doing this for years in Massachusetts, we take the paper that comes out of Irving Paper Mill, make a manufactured topsoil, most of our work is on state controlled farmland for farmers, uh, we don't get to reclaim gravel pits very often. Uh, so we're looking to make this into a, like a wildlife sanctuary when we're done, uh, grassland.
Yeah, there's another, where, where you said you get your waste from, where?
Irving.
Cause what about, was another company doing the same, same exact thing, they've been capping landfills with the same, same material, right, Tom's is first name, I think.
Tom Carter.
Tom Carter?
Yeah, he used to work for, um, well, he used to manage the Irving material ten years ago.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh.
Same, so it's the same material?
Exact same material, so we don't really have landfills to do, so, most of our work, and ninety percent of it's been on farmland, um, that's, you know, low in organic matter, um, APR land.
To establish farmland, is what you're saying?
We do both, we build new fields for farmers, and the paper mill pays for all of this, because they used to put this material in landfills, and the DEP, uh, doesn't accept organic materials in landfills, and so they basically, Irving had to hire us to manage the material and come up with this, like, farm program, and this would be a wildlife management area, the surrounding land uses, there's only thirty five feet of road frontage on this hundred acres.
Yeah, off of Gavin's Road, yeah.
So, the hope is, and we've already spoken to some of the other agencies, uh, DCR, and Army Corps, the surrounding, uh, land uses, and they're not interested in the way it is right now, um, but if it was a grassland, they would be. And Karen, we'd be working over here, and we'd be working over here, and there's a bunch of stuff in here that was, you know, promised many years ago, but none of it was really ever done, um.
No, we have on file a stormwater, is this, this isn't the same plan that there was.
It probably is.
Yeah, this is, um.
Wasn't that long ago?
Yeah, I think that was the last one they did.
The last permit expired, um, in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, I remember when he came in, I think he came in in the la- within the last two years.
The lawyer, not the landowner.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, some, somebody associated with this.
Yeah, this is, this has been, we've contacted the owner, and the mother died, the son lives on a house in Lake Wapisaki, he's not really interested in any of this, and Eric and I basically spent six months trying to have some communication with these folks, and so, this law firm in Boston actually manages the whole thing. And we've had him out, we've looked at it, and, um, you know, we didn't know what kind of promises were made in the past, so that's kinda what we're here for.
Yeah, cause we require them to do any active pits required, stormwater, um, permitting and whatnot, you know, to keep everything on site, said there's been no activity up there, which we know, um, so you're not looking to do anything other than reclaim what was already mined out?
That's what they would be doing.
And just start something fresh, is what you're trying to do?
Correct, yes, so, everything that's been done, has already been sloped and everything, um, so we would be looking to go into that section D that hasn't been, um, excavated yet.
And so you're coming with your new stormwater management practices to get the ball rolling on the virgin site, so to speak?
Correct. And I plan on utilizing the same firm, because obviously, the way everything is gonna slope is so that the water is gonna be contained on the whole site.
Yeah.
And we would be using some of these basins that are already established.
Dennis?
Uh, regarding the material that you're going to be putting in there, how is that evaluated for toxic girl?
Oh, the DEP, uh, regulate, they work with us on these.
They do regular testing of the?
Absolutely, and they, we, they give us our permit, so we've already had the guy out there to look at it just for the preliminary, and we're gonna do some perk test holes out there to test for depth of groundwater, uh, this week, cause that's kind of, and the Irving material is tested weekly, and it's always the same, and there's no issues with it.
And EPA does the testing, is it, on a weekly basis?
DEP does EPA, yes, they submit, uh, mu- weekly and monthly testing, and that's all part of the application, that's all included in there.
Are there any other areas there, this has occurred, or happened?
Well, lots of them.
Around?
Yeah, I've done quite a bit of work in Hubbardston, uh, Rutland, uh, Greenfield, Westfield, we've got two big projects going on.
Rutland and Upstate?
State Police Academy.
We did State Police Academy last summer.
What do you do out there?
Uh, that was a farm with a State Police Academy in the middle of it, uh, Department of Agriculture controls the land around it, it was pretty much vacant for five or six years, uh, the previous, uh, use was vegetable farming, and it just kind of left the fields with all the plastic in the fields. And so the department asked us to, um, kinda clean it up, and re- there was invasive weeds growing, cause when they stopped vegetable farming, there was no cover, so it basically became a growing bed for Canadian thistle that was four feet tall, and so, we went in, killed that, cleaned out the edges, took all the plastic out, incorporated some paper fiber, and, uh, grew corn on it for two years, to try to m- minimize any other weed comeback, and this year, it's getting seeded down to grass.
No, this property out here, for example, you said what the, what Army Corps expressed interest if it gets reclaimed, possibly?
Well, the, the surrounding land uses are all conservation, so they would be.
Right, so are you planning to just grassing it, are you gonna, are you gonna actually put some trees and, and native species out there to get it reforested, or what's the?
The reclamation generally starts with grass.
Yeah.
And then, if you just let it go.
Let Mother Nature take over.
Mother Nature will take over, but right now, with no topsoil, there's none even on the site to use.
Right, now, how thick will you be putting in it, cause I, I don't wanna see something that ends up being just a sledged landfill, say, well, it's, it's thirty feet deep, that's what works the best, I mean, are you guys talking twelve inches, or what are you talking?
No, no, no. Eighteen to sixteen inches is starting, and it all compresses down to about six to eight.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Yeah. Yeah, the DP, DEP sets kind of like our agenda.
Yeah, yeah, just preventing a sledge, a sledge dump, because, uh, once I said, like I said earlier, if you don't ask, you don't get the answer, so.
No, no, no.
Cause I, and I met, uh, Jim about ten years ago, because we have a couple pits in Spencer, and of course, with gravel, it's only pine trees, there's never any giant amount of organics, so we were looking at a way to do proper reclamation, and this is how this whole thing got started, um, and now, there's actually even jobs that require manufactured topsoil, because they want it to be green, so they don't want you to go and strip some area of, of topsoil.
Just put it somewhere else.
Exactly, so, it's a way to gener- for us to generate even another revenue and still be green, and not just be taking raw organic loom from another job and moving it somewhere else.
Yeah, I do remember when, uh, Tom, what was his last name again?
Christopher.
Chris, yeah, um, when he was basically bouncing and knocking on everybody's door, they had, they had a sandpit, I actually had one, and they wanted to do it, but it was next to the water, and I was just reluctant because of the, the metals contents, cause there is mercury, there is still these chemicals in the sludge, there's no, there's no denying that, it's, it's, it says it right in, it says right in the, in the report.
It's in trace.
I was just reluctant to do it myself personally, because I was right next to a body of water, and I just didn't want anything coming back at me, but, um, I mean, it's you guys, it's, it's gonna be your, um, up to you to, you know, prove it to us that it's, it's safe, but, me personally, I don't see any problem with it, but I'm gonna, I definitely gonna have something from the EPA or DEP before I'm gonna sign off any type of thing like that under our stormwater, that we're bringing in heavy metals and, and whatnots, um, into, into, into anywhere in town, so.
The thing that makes Irving unique is that it's a very small, uh, treatment plant, built basically built for the.
Plant, yes, yes. For Irving.
It's not like bringing another Chelsea, that kinda thing.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the test results show all the metals that need trace.
Right.
Which is basically what's naturally occurring in the soil, there's no elevated levels.
No, I'm just telling you what I had for experience, as far as, it's our job to protect the town in any capacity, whether it's development, or, or, or reclamation, if we have some say in it, we're gonna make sure that.
Correct.
Nobody's, nobody's regretting it down the road, and I'm not putting my name on something that, gonna come back and haunt the town, so to speak.
And that's why. Right. No, and it's D E P. And that's why the permit comes from the Department of Agriculture.
Right, exactly, that's why I said, so as long as we have all the other ABCs and EPAs on it.
Yeah.
The other thing that happens is that we have, we're required to blend this with the sand, which makes the gravel pit a perfect place to do this.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're layering pure paper in a landfill type of.
Yeah, I know, I'm familiar, I've seen it, I mean, I know, I think one of the first ones they ever did was the Hubbardston landfill, actually, when they first started kicking that stuff out, trying to find a home for it, Dennis?
It makes one. Right. Right.
Right. Uh, you said that Irving pays you to take?
They pay us to find a home, for the material.
Find a home, do you charge to dispose of it, that, that site?
No.
I mean, it's, it's definitely a good, it's a good full circle, so to speak, of trying to.
Cause there's different towns, the town of Ware actually used their product for a soccer field, and we've used it on a project in Ware that, um, is a farmer's field, and she ended up growing, uh, corn on it the first couple of years, once there was enough organics, and now does haze it, so that was approximately six years ago, that we did that.
Okay.
Okay, um, so. What do you want from us right now, I know you have to go in front of Sleckman, correct?
We have to do labor work for you and do all of our stormwater, cause you're gonna govern that, so really, a lot of it was just for us to come in front of you, introduce ourselves, see if there were any other questions that you had, um, Mallory has been phenomenal, as far as giving information.
Yeah, no, it's. That's our Mallory.
She is, she's wonderful, as we said, she's my new D F F, so, yeah, that's all, so a lot of it was just to make sure that there were no questions or concerns, obviously, we're different companies that were in there before, um, we just plan on, you know, doing a good job, and.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't even recall who the last company was going out of there, does anybody know, it's been a while.
Uh, Perkins.
Was Perkins the last company out of there? Okay, um, anybody have any other immediate, um.
Interesting.
Thoughts or anything towards it?
Cause there's enough cards for each of you, I mean, feel free, my email is on there, if after the fact, there's any questions or concerns, don't hesitate to send me an email, and that is a copy of our contract with the landowner, so that you see what, as far as us having a right to, you know, proceed.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Here's our contract. Oh, beautiful, okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, no, I would just say, uh, you know, keep us in the loop as you progress, and these are some of the things we're gonna be, we would look at, um, I, I know, as far as you're coming. Um I, I know as far as you're coming into town for gravel removal up uh permit, it goes through the Sluckman, but the first thing the Sluckman will do is say go to planning, because you have to follow all your stormwater.
Correct.
Storm, and we have a whole bylaw on that, and I'm sure you probably have a copy of it, okay?
We have a list of everything.
Okay. And then, excuse me, when we get to that point, um and you're ready to submit, we have a, we have, we have Whitman and Bingham for peer review, what have you. And they're pretty good at their, their calc's and um and we'll figure out the fine tuning of the language of the materials or um you know, maybe something from EPA or or some type of regular testing to be submitted, I don't know if the Board of Health, they wanna chime in on at the same time.
Yeah, Board of Health.
Yeah, we'll have a meeting with them.
Yeah, we're meeting next.
Our application needs DEP approval.
Yeah, yeah.
From the DE, needs Board of Health approval from the DEP.
Slash DEP, right, yeah, so I don't wanna do the Board of Health's work, but whatever, we can stick out there and make everybody's package, you know, complete, which is works out good for the applicant too, because it's everything's, if everything's addressed and uh
Yep.
it's um, so the first person that questions, you're sorry, it's right here, you know, we had hearings and here it is, you know, so it, it works both ways.
Absolutely.
You know. Any, any other questions for the um soon to be applicant? No? Seeing none, you guys anything else for us?
No.
Alright.
This could be a gravel operation too.
Yes.
I mean, you're gonna be, you're looking to haul gravel out of there.
Yes.
And bring sludge in.
Well, the sec- it'd be the second phase.
Yeah, bring the paper fiber in, yes, yes, to inform the reclamation.
But we're gonna be doing the reclamation.
At the same time.
Wasn't.
Right.
Correct, so they're gonna fix already what was done, and then I'll continue with new.
Yeah.
And then as I go, we'll make sure that it's reclaimed right behind us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that, at least, cause the trouble was from years past, a lot of stuff just slipped through the cracks, but today, earth removal, you need to be bonded now and so on and so forth, where before it was like, you know, thousand dollar bond, so, yes, yeah.
Uh yeah.
Keep the thousand, I'm never coming back, I mean, you know, that happened a lot.
The day the permit expires.
E- e- exactly, yeah, and so, of course, some of those, that's, that was just the way things were then, and things are different now, so but once again, it's for everybody's protection, you know, so we don't, nobody gets hung out to dry with it, either way. So I'm not saying this stuff's a bad stuff, but as long as everybody's uh on board, it's, it's beyond one board or one person to say, yeah, you're good, um but DEP comes into town, I'm gonna give them your number, not mine, okay?
That's the first thing, guys.
Yeah. And I'm sure they know where you live. Um, okay, anybody else, anything else? We good?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks for coming in, just keep us closer, we're good, alright.
Thank you.
I have a unrelated question.
Yeah.
So I chair the planning board in Hartland. Do you guys have a marijuana bylaw?
No.
None. North Brookfield does now.
Yeah, we passed one.
It's like sixteen inches.
If you choose to do one, my only word of advice is that community outreach meeting that they're proposing.
Yeah.
Make it a requirement that they, that they do that first before they come to you for a special permit. We had a school gymnasium filled with probably seventy or eighty people. All ticked off about this one proposal that we had, it was really, it's, the town voted for it, it's just that they, it was the wrong place.
Yeah, yeah. That's same here, the town didn't show any opposition towards it, they went, the, the majority vote at the polls, they voted yes.
Right.
But that was where we left it.
Well, but if you, they vote yes, then you have to write a bylaw, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, we, we, this, this kinda looks at, it's, it's all in the infant stages right now, and even, I know one of the applicants for the school was, like, they're not even talking like for, until a year, because they know we need to if we're gonna pass the school over to them or sell them the school, it's gonna take a long time to do it, but they're willing to kinda hang on, so it's like anything, it's catching everybody by, not really by surprise, but it's like, now that they picked you, it's like, oh, okay, let's figure it out.
Right. Well, it's just what that would avoid is the hysteria caused, you, you don't want that kind of an environment, obviously, in public hearing.
Right.
And so why not get that over with by doing the community outreach?
Yeah.
So we're gonna tweak our bylaw that says you actually have to do that before coming to the planning.
Can you send us a copy of your bylaw, or is it something we can?
Yeah, what city was it, what town is it?
Hardwood.
Is it online?
Oh, Spex has one.
It's online, if you go to the planning.
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
North Brookfield is too, because we have, we have um one of the largest growing facilities now in North Brookfield.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Um so.
We saw, yeah, sorry.
No, that's so, so I, we, we just, we had one bylaw and then we just did another one that was just.
You tweaked it, that fits better.
Yeah, they gotta get.
Yes.
Yeah, anything you can share, send it right to Mallory's email or whatever.
I'll just find out online.
It makes it easier, why reinvent the wheel?
Why reinvent the wheel?
Exactly, of course, we're all in the same vote.
Southampton's, I think, I can't remember where.
Okay, yeah, awesome.
Um but if you go to Hartwood's, your website is wonderful, by the way, ours is horrible.
You might be the first one to ever say that.
When you go to Hartwood's, you'll find out why I say that. Um but you gotta go to the, under departments, go to planning board and then you'll find the bylaw.
Okay.
It's like lost in sight.
The other thing I found is that when you, when you uh, when you, when you, when you borrow another community's bylaw, I found it's very important that you make sure you take out their name everywhere and insert your name, cause I see one that we had, it said it had another town in it.
I think you would start here. Yeah, and we're, I'm just reading for Laurie.
Right. X, Y, and Z, we don't have X, Y, and Z. But no, it, it does help when you're sharing municipalities, all trying to do the same thing, and so
Yeah, absolutely.
we, we've grabbed other bylaws from other, at least it's a boilerplate to start, and you can always be tweaking from there, you know?
That's what I know, I'm in the morning, I'll let you know.
On the Board of Health.
Yeah.
So we're gonna start a seminar application.
Perfect.
Most of the guys are lawyers.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's perfectly acceptable.
It's perfect.
CMR D E P doesn't work too quickly.
No.
And then like with my stuff, I contacted the engineering group.
M I P C.
They have on the plan, so that'll.
M I P C. Monmouth Regional Planning Commission, yeah.
So CMR P C, Central Mass helped us later.
He can adjust with the new.
Okay.
And they have since taken that as a model and have given it to others, so.
It works.
I have a passion for that.
It works.
But I highly recommend it with them.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care, guys.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Um, okay, where's the registry of deeds? Is he with your card? This is, uh yeah, what, every year you have to sign your members in, so they uh, this is when you use your good.
Your real, your nice.
Your real, you know, John, Ankh, Whala.
Irving.
What is your thinking about it? You're gonna give them a permission to keep a gravel pit? We got about six pits that are illegally.
Better, it's home.
You think you'd have them?
He's still not quite sure what it was.
Before.
On the fall, if it.
Signed by your name.
You know, the guys that's.
Fracture or what?
Chris, if you can sign mine too, it's okay.
I gotta. Let me just say anything. I'm gonna give a guy a permit, give him new permit, but the illegal guys still have.
He's just, he just got home.
Oh, no, lucky me.
He just got home at like three o'clock this afternoon, so, he was in there all night, so. Yes, who is something? But he's, he's three and he goes a hundred and ten miles an hour at all times.
My girl does do, she doesn't stop.
This is weekend, this weekend.
He did a face plant.
I see. How come all those cars are parked?
They thought he broke a car room job, that's what they thought it, they did all kinds of tests, I guess, they're still not a hundred percent sure, but it's
Yeah.
How many extra people you think? Couple hundred, I don't know.
Wow, some sort of a, an abscess or infection that was probably caused by that.
Um there's probably an.
His whole face swelled up and he had a fever.
Oh, good gravy.
He wouldn't eat, he wouldn't drink.
Yeah.
So they ended up taking him to the emergency room yesterday and he stayed overnight. He didn't get home, like I said, at like three o'clock this afternoon and.
They're slowing down.
IV antibiotics in him and everything else.
Yeah.
Slowing down to a, to a standstill or?
Okay.
And he just had his cancer so, not that long ago.
I was gonna say, wasn't he just done?
I mean, I don't know for sure, but I think someone said something, you know, they're still working.
So he was.
He's done with doctors.
Not real happy with it.
Yeah.
I don't blame him.
Is all healed?
No, so he hasn't been a lot more, a lot of activity there lately, early on the head.
So. He's not real happy when people start sticking me in the. Tell him to take his medication, he just. He just goes, you wanna take it?
We have to do a whole song and dance, like it's a production in my house to get medication, my seven year old's been in a children's with kidneys.
We all signed in?
All signed?
And it's like unreal, and then you feel so bad because you're so like, ooh, about your kid, but there's so many kids who are so much sicker.
Yeah, um. Oh, we'd like to welcome the new guy, Dennis. You just won the election.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll give you the rulebook, follow through. Uh reorganization.
Time of year.
We don't have to change positions, we just have to vote on it.
I say we leave it the way it is.
I can burn out for you.
I say that. I make a motion, we leave it the way it is.
Oh, there you go. Are you comfortable with that, Kirk?
I don't care, I'll stay top dog, I don't care. I get to field all the calls at home, you know, weekends, vacation.
You love hearing from me.
Yeah. As long as I'm not exempt from blocking calls. Um, cause right now I'm chair, Charlie's co-chair.
Yep, I think you're technically clerk.
Clerk, yeah.
Clerk, Tim's clerk. Everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Want to take the motion then?
John made it, I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Leave things alone, alright. Um, any new business, anybody?
Yeah.
Oh, John, uh, oh Dennis?
Uh, yeah, about a year ago, so we wrote a letter to the Open Space Committee approving their open space plan. And we're still working on getting that finalized and.
We as in the planning board?
The planning board, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if we were, apparently that letter got lost someplace along the line, were you able to find anything?
I never mailed it. I'm just kidding.
You never mailed?
It wasn't up to me.
Actually, I think it was probably dropped into John and Charles' box.
I couldn't find anything in Carol's.
You couldn't find anything at all?
So what did, what was it?
This is just, the, the, the planning board approved the uh open space plan and.
Which was already in place though, right?
Well, it's been in place, but it hasn't been finally approved, because of the fact that there were several things that were missing, like the, we have to count all the shade trees in town, we have to.
Holy cow, really?
Do the aquifers and.
If we cut a few of those down, it would save you guys some time.
Flood zones.
Hmm?
If we cut a few of those trees down, it would save you some time.
No, don't be cutting any more trees down.
We gotta cut the trees in town.
We're running into a tree shortage as it is. Challenging trees. Uh, so if we can generate another letter, just saying that the, the planning board approves uh of the open space plan.
I guess you'd have to just bring in a, bring in a letter as to what you're actually
I can.
what we need to draft one up or something like that.
I can write one up and.
Based on, but having some, just so you can explain it to the board, you know, just so exactly we know what we're endorsing out, right?
It's amazing, if you wanna work with the ladies in the office.
We've all seen the plan, we've all read it in detail.
It was over a year ago?
Oh, more than that even.
I'd say you need to refresh everybody's memory, that's just me, I'm just saying, I don't know, you know.
The plan had been tentatively approved, but we were lacking certain things, like, like I say, the flood lanes we didn't list and uh the uh aquifer.
But when you're talking, when you're talking shade trees, I mean.
Well, that, that's even become even a greater problem, because
You think?
the state has changed shade tree requirements to include trees along streets and roads as well.
When you say count trees, you don't mean each actual tree, you mean like areas?
No, each actual tree. We used to just have to count like the, on the common and areas of that nature.
Common, that'll be all.
But now it has to include streets as well. I don't know how that's gonna be resolved. Alan may.
You mean the streets all in town, all the streets in town?
That's according to what we were told.
Literally, it's gonna go by one, two, three.
You're right, you're right, so I don't know how.
Five hundred thousand.
Well, why don't you just do it, why don't you just do it in January, none of them have shade, you can just go up to zero.
Well, and I was kinda that little oak sapling, not that. The saplings are gonna be a tree, it's a tree technically.
If you did it in January, you'd just go up with zero, cause none of them have the leaves on, and they're not getting any shade.
I don't know how we're gonna.
But what hap- what, I'll get the side though, but my only problem would be, okay, granted, there's just some trees you wanna save or whatever, I mean, even like the ones they had to cut down, tell them instead of, because I have something on my road that are gonna fall over and somebody's gonna get killed, but technically it's a shade tree. But I'm looking at it as, the thing's probably two, three hundred years old, it should be cut down. I myself personally would not wanna get caught up with a, oh, that's on our, in our um open space inventory, so therefore it can't be cut. I'm, I'm not a big fan of that.
I, I don't think, uh, the plan doesn't uh say that, it's, it's just that we have to list the number that we have, that's all, it doesn't say.
Cause I'm all for safety versus policy, you know?
Yeah, it doesn't say anything.
I just can't believe somebody expects us to count trees, I just, I just.
It's just one of the things that we were lacking in our report, and we have to go back and now redo that.
You wanna count trees, go up to like Tucson, Arizona or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, the bylaw.
It's like one.
Well, originally it was only counting the trees, like I say, on the Palmer and areas of that nature.
But when they say shade trees, like, I live in a lot of shade, I have a lot of trees on my property, and they're all shady.
Well, yeah, but that's not along the street. The ones that go along two A might be considered now, under the new ruling of the state, so.
But what do you wish to gain by doing so, is what, I guess, um.
Well, we just have to get the, the letter in as part of the planning boards, uh we need a letter from planning board, need a letter from a couple of other departments.
You just need a letter of support from us.
You're right, that's all it really essentially is.
We're just saying, draft a simple letter of support.
He's looking for counters.
I'll send my boy over, my son Joseph, he's five, he can go all the way up to forty. Just have him do it over and over again.
I guess that's the name of it.
I'm not signing up to be a counter.
Very brief.
Tell you what, Dennis, you bring in, you bring in, bring in the first letter with, you know, refresh our memories to what you were doing, whatever, and then I guess we can all, this will take into consideration then.
I'd say work with the ladies in the office and probably.
Yeah.
Counting trees, I've heard it all. Um, any other new business?
I am.
Jo- oh.
Go ahead, John.
No, I was just gonna ask, um, so did anybody else at the board talk to the State Ethics Commission except, other than me?
I did.
Okay.
Oh, I did.
You did, okay, so what?
In regards to Bonza Road?
Well, in regards to, not me was involved, but or, because for me it was on two A.
Okay.
Same thing.
Okay.
Yep.
And so I never heard anything.
Me neither, they, they.
She told me she was gonna send letters and.
They basically said, I had double conflicts, but I told them exactly what happened, how we didn't bring it up anyways and so on and so forth, and they says, uh if you don't hear from us, have a nice day, so that was three months ago for me, right?
Yeah, same.
It was a while ago, so.
You did, did you think?
It's about having conflicts of interest in a vote? It's about having conflicts of interest in a vote?
Well, mainly because, um, as it was put, and I even mentioned to her, I says, uh, I think six out of seven, or, or five out of seven members on the board own land in one or, one or more of the districts that we were trying to rezone.
It was the two A.
Highway business and stuff, yeah, and then, um, and so I just, I'd explain the whole thing as far as from my end, as well as the planning board's end, and cause she had mentioned, okay, you know, basically what was up with you, what was, you know, I said, well, they own property and, uh.
Yep.
I said I disclosed.
You need to call them to get their, you know, side of it, but I.
Exactly.
I says, we're just gonna tell you exactly what happened, and I did mention that we didn't have to do the, the matter of necessity, the vote of necessity, because the way it worked out, but, um, because only doing Bowles Road.
My understanding on that is that, in a small town, since everybody's involved in everything, then in order to have an actual legal case for a, for a ethics infringement.
Yeah.
There needs to be money directly tied to the, it needs to be money directly going from whatever the vote affected to you.
Right.
So, it, it, it would have to be like the guy who, the rezoning was gonna automatically, you know, there was a deal in place that you were gonna.
You're gonna sell your land next week.
Yeah, or you, or you. Or you, or you, he sold it tomorrow after the zone, you know, was closed and. But even worse than that, it would have to be the, the person putting the zoning thing was the buyer. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You, like, you, you would have to have the person who was, who was pushing for the zoning thing being a, a candy maker that you had already done a deal with, you know?
Yeah.
And then someone would have to.
Well, I think that's the way they looked at it, they, they just need to know what happened, and so, like I said, apparently they called us all anyways, man, so.
I said, look at the tapes, so.
Because, cause in the same way, anyone else driving on Bowndale Road or two A, or living, could say that they would have a conflict in, in a town vote, because it's just too, everyone's involved in everything. It affects my sister, it affects my brother.
The only thing that they did tell me was that, that we didn't, whatever, me, whatever didn't do, or whatever we didn't do, was that, um, when it's a, like, what they called, a vote of necessity, whatever, matter of necessity, because if you have so many conflicts, like, cause like Christoph said, cause it's such a small town, there's a form we need to fill out when that happens, so they have it on record.
But you voted anyway.
Yeah, but said you're supposed to fill that out, I don't know, prior or after, so you, so in other words, we are claiming that, 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 um, that statute, that's all, he had said, it wasn't a goal.
Yeah.
No harm, no foul, but just informational.
Well, we should make sure if that happens again, that we.
Right, if we, in other words, if it was, if four out of seven had a conflict, and we still have to vote the thing, or five out of seven, we just have to fill that out saying, we had to do it, cause we all, like Christoph said, we all drive by, it's like, something like that.
Did we ever find out for sure that we, if there's, to be quorum, you only have to have four people out of seven, right?
Correct.
And three of those people could abstain, and one could say yes, and it would pass?
Yeah.
To be verified?
You only need four people to open the meeting.
Okay.
And then you just need majority vote of, of voting members.
Okay, and so, if you abstain, you abstain, you abstain, Tim says, agree, passes.
If two vote yes, one abstains, the other one votes no, it passes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, cause I remember.
You just need the four, it'd be no different than having a four member.
We had to have four people here, period.
Cause we have a seven member board.
Yeah, okay.
So, you need four people to even open the meeting, that's what it boils down, you can't have three, cause you don't have a quorum to open. Once you open the meeting, it's majority vote of your, of your.
Right, cause we, we did something one time, I remember there was a vote, we had a bunch of abstentions, as I think you were.
Yeah, I remember that.
And I just remember we passed it.
And it was legal.
And it was due to some questions.
It went to town council.
It did, okay, I was just curious, I just don't remember hearing anything.
It went to town council, it was actually, I, I was involved in that vote, and I had to.
I think we all were, I just.
Yeah, and I, and they brought it to town council, and they says, yes, it was the right way to do it.
So, we know that that's how it works, okay, I was just curious about that.
Do the minutes from?
Oh, the minutes, the minutes from what, last year, whenever you guys had a meeting last?
Kirk, one more thing.
Oh, Frank?
Uh, this has been brought up many times, and it kinda struck a nerve tonight of, you're gonna wanna gravel bank permit, open a gravel bank. Well, we got about five or six illegal gravel banks in town with no permits, should, we're gonna be part of it, should we allow another gravel pit to come in when you still got five that are running with no permits? I mean, it might be, it's, it's been brought up, you know, through the years.
But these guys have nothing to do with illegal operations.
I, I know that, well, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, as a board, should we honor?
They will be operating one, that's your choice.